Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. I am president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District. I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on public comment form located in the back of the room prior to tonight's meeting. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mrs. Mizele Flint is en route. But with that, we will get started. First on our agenda this evening is our pledges. If everyone will stand, I'll lead us in our pledges. All right, moving forward. We have public comments this evening. We have one signed up, Mr. Virgil Pacetti, regarding finance and leadership.
My name is Virgil Pacetti. Concerned, Dan. You know, this is our first meeting with the now over 50,000 POs that y'all decided to implement. You know, we keep hearing about how transparent you are, how you want to make sure that the public's engaged, how we know what you're doing, and now you've made it harder to see what you're doing by adding $30,000 to your oversight. So normally, y'all would look at things, anything over 20. Now you're only looking at things over 50. And it makes it a lot harder for someone in the public that might want to look because now we have to do FOIA requests for everything. We want to know what's under 50 because how else are we going to know what that company is or what the contract is? So, you know, if you want to be honest with the public and tell us what's going on, doubling your oversight, lack of oversight now, it's not one way to do it. Transparency, still on that topic. The people want to know what happened to San Jacinto. I have parents reaching out to me going, "What is going on with that foundation?" And I said, "I don't know." And I can't know because apparently I'm a terrorist because that's what they told the Attorney General, that I can't have that information because it could be used for terrorism. Was it lack of maintenance or an act of nature? Tell the people. Is the insurance company going to pay you for it or did it get denied? Y'all have known for two months now, and holding out for us makes us think something's going on, and especially right before an election. That looks really suspicious. Well, let's not put any bad news out until after we get our Prop A money. Be transparent. Tell us what's going on. You know, it's not going to be an act of terrorism to tell us what happened to that And now that you have your Prop A money, you got an extra 1.5 million discretionary. We're 39 tradespeople short. We've only financed over the nine months to fill three of them. We need tradespeople. Y'all want to do a bond and build new schools? We don't even have anybody that can maintain them when you do build them because we can't even maintain what we have now. When I walked through my son's school the other day at Glenn, in fact, I saw the president of the board there. It looks horrible. It needs to be painted. The doors are all tore up, the carpet stained, and it was even brought up in the Parker Hill thing. And when I did a FOIA for that, I was told, "No, we can't tell you what damages are there because you might use it for terrorism." What are we doing here? Are y'all just trying to hide everything from the public? Why don't you tell us what's going on? And get some tradespeople hired. We need 39 people, men and women, to come and work and help sustain these schools, and you have the money now, so please do something about it.
All right, moving forward. We are going to turn this over to Mr. Dindell to conduct our Finance and Audit Committee Workshop.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We've got several reports tonight. First on the agendas are TEA Intruder Detection Audit, and I think Mr. Walters is going to help us with that tonight. Welcome, Scott.
Good evening. Scott Walters, Coordinator of Safety and Security. And once again, thank you, seven people, for what y'all do for our school district. Really appreciate it. I need to inform you that two intruder detection audits were conducted between October 21st, our last meeting that I was here, and November 11th today. Corrective actions, if any, are being handled by the campus administration.
Any questions for Mr. Walters? Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Next is our construction update, and Mr. Henry is going to help us with that tonight.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. We'll jump right on in here. The first project we have is McGill Elementary. McGill's moving right along. Most of the inside is pretty much done. The majority of the remainder of the work is all outside exterior stuff. Painting, right now, they're starting to paint the existing campus that's going to stay. They're working on the prep work and then getting ready to paint it to match the new stuff. The playground is in. I know this was a question that a lot of people were asking, was what was the big concrete pad and everything? That's part of the playground. As you can see here, we have a large basketball court in the playground, and then just this side of that basketball goal, there's going to be other activities as well, four-square and, I think, a gaga pit. Paving would be the final thing that they do. They're working on doing their final leveling. Reese Albert's been on-site last weekend and this week, working on that sort of stuff. And then they're also making plans to demo the building that's going to go away from the old campus as well. Here's some pictures of the inside of the new cafeteria. Everything on the inside is, has been cleaned and gone through and pretty much ready to have school right now as far as cleanliness goes. The kitchen's 100% complete. Training is scheduled, and then later they're going to come back and install the TVs. That's the only thing we're waiting for in the kitchen area or the dining area. The next project we have is Fannin Elementary. This one is pretty much the same thing. All the interior work is done. They're just trying to finish up this exterior, these last exterior items. They did pour the play court. You can see the gaga pit over there. They are working on landscaping. Our trees were delivered last week to the site. Got a little bit of rain on them, thankfully. They're also dressing up all the landscaping. We're still waiting on the gutters to be completed. And then they also did the handicap access sidewalk to the play court, and then we're also finishing the fencing. Last project we have coming up is the Altaloma Data Center. This is going to, this is one project that has four different pieces to it. We're going to bait asbestos from this campus, and then we'll demo buildings F, G, and H. And then we'll fix all the electrical that was damaged during the accident over there. And then the last thing, and the biggest piece of it, is the new district server location as well. Did y'all have any questions over any of these projects?
Any questions for Ms. Henry?
When do we anticipate getting the keys to McGill?
We're shooting for the end of the month to try and get the keys there. They're wanting to get their certificate of occupancy sometime that first two weeks of November and then we, or I'm sorry, December, and then we can move in.
So we'll have the entire holiday and maybe a week before the holiday to get moved?
We're going to work, we have a meeting with the campus to kind of organize that and work together to see what support they need and when we can do it.
Any additional questions?
How are we on budget at both projects?
Good.
Under?
Under.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Next, we have an update on the Proposition A, and Dr. Brandon is going to help us with that report.
Dr. Brandon, Dr. Kingman, Board of Trustees, just wanted to take a minute and kind of review the Proposition A results, even though those aren't able to be canvassed until we have those from the Elections Administrator from the county. When you had that comeback, you can see that the very positive absentee voting and early voting, almost 60% in favor during the early voting, Election Day voting, a little bit lower at 55 and 44, but large turnout for early voting. 25,000 votes cast in early voting compared to only 6,000 Election Day. So you see the totals, therefore, because of the 25,000 in early voting, remained right at 59% for, 41 against on those total votes. Just to compare that to last year, you know, there was a question about how do things fare in a presidential election versus a non-presidential election year? Certainly, the voter turnout is much greater. So you see in '23, 89% of the VATREs, what you would call a Proposition A, passed. And then in 2024, a year later during the presidential election, 40%. So very appreciative of the community, the work that went into that, the support that the district received to pass, especially in that environment. The election results are set to be canvassed next Monday night at the board meeting, and then Dr. Skelton will share the plans for, and timelines for the employee salary adjustments. He'll lay all that out also next Monday night at the regular meeting. Any questions or comments?
Any questions for Dr. Brandon?
Thank you, Dr. Brandon. I just want to publicly say thank you to the community for supporting our teachers and staff. Obviously, they're doing all the hard work in the classrooms and with our trades, and everyone across the district, except Dr. Moran's getting a raise. So we really appreciate the fact that the community came out and supported the people who are doing the work with all these kids here in San Angelo. So I just want to publicly say that.
And, Dr. Brandon, I would like to thank you and Dr. Moran and Dr. Kingman because through this course of this time, I know that y'all spend a lot of your lunch hour going and talking to organizations and after work, being interviewed, and that's a lot of time, after-hours. And on behalf of teachers, I know, because they've reached out to me and are very appreciative, appreciative, and there's nothing better than going to work and knowing that the community supports you. And last thing is, I can't think of anything more important than hiring those police officers and protecting our children. So thanks. I want to reiterate what Dr. Kingman said. Thank you to everyone who voted for this.
Additional comments? Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Brandon. And you might stay put because we've also got a demographic report or a demographic update that Mr. Columbach's going to help us with. Okay. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and the board. Just wanted to give you, do I have a clicker? We just wanted to give you just a quick, kind of some highlights in the recent demographers' report. The goal being, there's a lot of data in this. We're not going to go through it slide by slide, but do want to look at a few things. The goal being to explain why the demographer on the last slide projected the way that they're projecting our numbers to go over the next few years. So the historical data speaks to that a little bit. So we just kind of want to go through a few of the slides. If you, I think you have had the chance to look through it. So again, there's a lot on here. I just want to point out a couple of things that are leading to some of the projections that are made. One on this slide is the decrease in the average household size in SAISD, and that will, we can take a look at that as we go through because it's kind of a theme throughout this, throughout this data. Also, as you see on this one, how the total population of San Angelo is, has increased. The majority of that is in age 65 and older, if you see that on the bottom middle of that slide right there. In fact, 39% since 2010. So a couple of other things in household growth. There's an important statistic, there's a couple of important statistics there. This just breaks down from, between the city, what is in SAISD, and then also what is in the county. And we'll take a look at the, in a couple of slides about who goes to school and which districts in our county. Actually, it'll be in one slide, as you can see. This one is an important slide, but there's a better one that shows the growth in those districts in a little bit. This is the enrollment of SAISD, and this is an important slide. And you can see that right at 2014 is when our enrollment was the highest, and then it gradually starts declining. This will be important to look at as we look back 10 years, really, is when this decline started to gradually show up. So let me go, there's a lot on this slide as well. The, that's the rate of decline and the net loss over that, and then there's some averages in there. I'm going to kind of skip through that pretty quick on that slide because there's a couple of slides that show that decline a little bit in more detail. This is the, this is the growth of the districts all around us. I would encourage, as you look at all of this data, to just let the numbers speak for what they are. It's sometimes we kind of run, our brains kind of go to the whys of why this, these types of growth and things might be happening. It does look like the, the growth is moving to the rural neighborhoods, but they are pretty much staying close to town. So there's a couple of interesting things about that. The farther away that you get, the numbers in those smaller towns that are farther away are declining. So it's pretty interesting data there. This is an important slide because it shows in which grade levels the decline in enrollment has happened so far. So if you notice a couple of things, if you look at the 2014 number to the 2024 number in elementary, you can see that that is the vast majority of the decline in enrollment. Middle school has, has gone down between those years just a little bit, and there's almost no decline at all in high school. So that's important to note because where the decline in enrollment happens is important in terms of projecting where we're going and how things are going to play out over the next several years. So if you keep this in your mind as we look at the next slide, this is the slide that probably shows the best information about what is happening with the decline in enrollment. If you, if you will look at the green, the green highlights are the record class size. So that is by grade level over those years, and the record class size is just indicating when those, those grade levels across our whole district were the largest. And the fact that it stair steps down like that, almost all the way down, is showing a couple of things. If you look at the enrollment of kindergarten in 2014, and you can track that, so those kids, those kids that are in kindergarten are in first grade the next year, second grade the next year, and third grade, and those numbers relatively stay the same all the way down for that, what we call a cohort. So the whole group of students in a grade level, we consider a cohort, and they hold pretty steady from when a cohort enters kindergarten all the way down. In fact, if you look at the, that same cohort in, when they are in the eighth grade, which I believe is maybe 2019, the number is about the same. And you see that all along. Where you see the decline is look at the number of kindergarteners entering our system year after year after year. So what will happen is if there's a slight decrease in kindergarten, but those numbers hold all the way out. In other words, those kindergarteners that enter our system, they stay in our system. And you can see that play out in just about every grade level all the way down. But over year after year with a decline in kindergarten, when those, that's fewer kids in first grade the next year, and then there's another decline in kindergarten. Then the next year, there's fewer students in second grade, as well as the fewer students in first grade, and another decline in kindergarten. And year after year is what's causing that decline. Fewer students are entering our system. But the ones that enter our system are finishing, and that's why on that previous slide, you would see that there's really no difference in the last 10 years in high school because those students in 2014 where the decline started to happen are not in high school yet. They're about to enter high school. And so what, what you can reasonably take away from these last three slides is that that decline will continue into high school over the next several years because it's already there. It was those kindergarteners going into ninth into 10th grade. So it's an important slide because it speaks to, again, the birth rate is down as well as the family size. People are having less children. That was in that first slide as well. Our town is aging and we're not being replaced by young families, and the young families that are coming in, and our families in general are having fewer kids. This is not just San Angelo. It's being well documented around the country, really. So it's something, it's just an explanation, a possible explanation. There's other factors, but one good explanation for why we're going to project the numbers that were, that are projected on the last slide of this presentation. This graph says the same thing. The yellow line is 12th grade, and the red and blue line is kindergarten and first grade. And for this report, we don't go back far enough yet to see where the high school effect is going to come in. Those kindergarteners in 2014 is really where that decline starts to happen. You probably want to ask about 2019. I don't have the answer for that. We have to dig into that with the demographer. All right, just a couple of other things. There's the, the birth rate and kindergarten enrollment. This speaks to the mobility of students in our district, which is a pretty high, either mobility between schools in our district or in and out of our district. We have a lot of students who move away. We have a lot of students that move in. That is, that is a challenging thing. There are other districts that have higher mobility, but a lot of districts have lower mobility than we do. Military can be part of that. We have a higher percentage of military than most school districts. It can be a part of that in terms of net gain and net loss. But net gain and net loss, if both are high, that's where you get the high mobility. This is another mobility chart that shows in terms of newcomers to our district and those who are leaving. On this slide, it's speaking to in and out of district. Those are not transfers that are within our district, between schools. Those are just students that do not live in San Angelo, or they live in San Angelo but go to a charter school, a public charter school. That's the next slide that shows the vast majority are the, are in public charter schools. And this chart right here does not show the number of out-of-district transfers of students who transfer into our district. We have a number of those, and those are never from a public charter school. If someone leaves TLCA, they don't come here on a transfer. They live here. They live in our zone. But if, we have 140 students who transfer in from Great Creek, say, for example. So any transfers in are not going to be reflected in a charter number, but they will in terms of a transfer out, even though they live in our district. That is a picture of where our students are coming from, in and out of the district. And this is, so this is the elementary zones and their increase or decrease. And to be real honest with you, in our district, this, this chart really does not show us very much because of our open transfer policy, because those numbers, those do not reflect the number of children that live in that zone. That is the actual enrollment of the school. So if the transfers and the number of transfers that we accept really kind of mess with those numbers, it's not a reflection of where students live in our city. I don't know if you want to ask questions as we go or just at the end. Keep going. There's some other data in this chart that speaks to just the various living situations and home sales. But, and, and those all could be factors in terms of the projection of enrollment, but those are a little bit harder to draw a causal relationship to. It's another where students live, and I'm just going to jump down to the projection at the end. And it's, it's a pretty, after looking at the enrollment in those grade levels, this is just a further projection of that, is really what that is, is as those kids from 2014 and on down, as you see those declines in kindergarten as they come into the system, this is what, this is what the projection will be. There's a high-end projection, low-end, and then the middle for the projection. That is the report. Questions or?
Questions for Mr. Columbach?
I have, I have a question. That chart where it showed how many students, I think, had gone to premier, the charter, we don't track those that leave and just are homeschooled? Do we not track those because it's?
They, we track them. They don't, that was not included in the demographers' report that I, that I know of. It wasn't included in, in the information that we got.
It wasn't included in the in the information that we got.
And and the year 2014, that's when we see that, correct? And I'm, you're good at this, Michael. Is that when, I'm thinking of homeschool kids that were losing. Is that when education became on internet, on, you know, that that you could find programs and teach your children at school, I mean, at home? Do you, because 2010, it wasn't there. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
I'm just wondering if that has something to do with the elementary dropping, because, you know, a lot of parents will homeschool or find alternatives in elementary. And then I can say this to you because, and I say this in all, just as a giggle, when they become middle school, they want them to go to school as a parent, you know? You don't want to stay home with your middle school. But I'm just wondering, I mean, that's just a thought that we have to remember that back in 2010, there wasn't laptops and all this accessibility to be able to do things at home, or, and I think that is a huge factor in what we're seeing also. There's just so many different, and some are good. I'm not, you know, I would never judge a parent on what they chose to do is best for their child, because I always say you do the best. But many years ago, the choice was one or the other, and now there's so many. So there's a lot of factors.
It definitely grew gradually in the number of programs and things available during that time. It grew exponentially during COVID with the, you know, possibilities and the programs. I mean, they were just popping up everywhere of of places. I will say that there is one place in the numbers where homeschool, when it was the moving in and out, so if a student goes to homeschool, that is registered as a someone who moved out. So that number would come in there, but then it was also in from there as well. But we don't, it's not designated. But we do, we do track that number. There's a lot of mobility, though. I will say that though, people will choose to homeschool for a while and then choose to go back into school. That's probably not happening as much like in if a if a student, if they decide not to put their student in SAISD, and over time, they might choose that for their family for the whole time or for a period of time. But one, one thing is pretty clear in the data is that the numbers hold from, once they start with us, they stay with us. The mobility factor is there, but the numbers hold once they start with us. It's just that decline early, and then that's just going to compound every year.
Additional questions?
I said a question. So like if a student or family, I guess, moves out of San Angelo to a surrounding, like Cristobal or something, that's going to show up in the mobility, not a transfer out, correct?
Correct. That is, the transfer is if they remain living in Cristobal and get a transfer out to Cristobal. That's going to show up in both, that they moved and that that was a transfer. If they move physically to Cristobal, that's not a transfer. That is just a move out.
Right. So how does like, where a wall doesn't have any transfers, how do they have 70 transfers from SAISD? I thought they didn't, I could be wrong.
Teachers' kids or employees' kids.
Well, and they had a trans, they accepted transfers up until a few years ago, so it could be that those transfers are older. And it wasn't until, I don't know for sure, but I think it was more recently that they didn't, but we also have quite a few transfers into San Angelo from Wall as well.
And then, but we, it's harder for us to figure, to, I guess, track people that are moving out of San Angelo to the surrounding communities.
It's difficult. It's not as hard once they enroll, because we'll get records requests, and then that's documented, and then we can run reports on where where they're going. Those numbers are relatively flat in terms of people moving out and then people moving in, especially out of state. They're pretty flat. They're not reflected here. It's just the mobility, but we track that for the last several years, and like the number of kids that move out of state are relatively the same as the ones that move from in-state and likewise, like out of district to other towns and then in. But that's probably a small, there's probably more moving out of the city than in. I think that's reflected in a couple of them with the mobility.
Couple of things when I was looking, excuse me, when I was looking at this this weekend, I mean, the things that kind of popped out to me were, one, as we look over the next five and 10 years, our sustainability plans, we need to, as a board and as an administrative team, we need to make sure that we're taking these numbers into account. And then the other thing that stood out to me is we need to make sure, you know, for Taylor Kingman, I'm not speaking for the board, but for Taylor Kingman, you know, there's not a district in our area that is anywhere close to offering the opportunities that our district does. And what we need to do is make sure that the programs and the that we are offering are shown and that our product matches the way we feel about our district, or I feel about our district, I guess I won't speak for everyone. I feel about our districts to make sure that we're we're capturing students where we can, because the truth of the matter is we're not going to change the birth rate. We're not going to change the number of 22-year-olds who come into my office asking for vasectomies that are never having kids. You know, like that's, that's just a reality that didn't happen 15 years ago. And so what we knew need to do is make sure that our product is better and that and that we are making sure people are aware of that product. But then also, we also have to take into account that the reality of the community is this an aging community, make sure that we create a sustainability plan that works with that, because otherwise, our product will suffer because we don't have the resources to create the product we need. So that was my take over the weekend.
Michael, did you do all of this data?
No, this is, this is the demographers' report. It's just, just bringing it to you so we can look through it. But this, no, this is, this is an extensive, this is an extensive report by the demographer.
Well, I know you, and you're capable of doing that. You're very bright.
I appreciate that mode of confidence, but that's, that is a ton of pulling data.
Anything else?
I have a question. First, thank so much for that report. That was lots of information. I think what I'm, I guess what I'm the most curious about is, so we know that students are, that some students are transferring to other districts. I know that my kids in school get, we get postcards and things from other districts trying to recruit our kids. Do we recruit, do we send postcards to kids who have recruited saying, we'd like you back? Or, I mean, to kids who have transferred saying, we'd like to have you come back, you know, and with the list of all the things that SAISD offers?
I think I'll jump out there and make a comment on that one by just stating that really it's going to be the quality of our programs, the quality of our staff, the culture of our school district as we continue to ramp things up, set higher expectations. That's your best marketing. And when we have great programs, great people, and high expectations, it will naturally cause people to want to come here. And when I talk to my friends, I have friends that are in private school with their children, charter school and homeschool. My comment to them is, I think every parent should choose what's best for their kid. I respect that. But my job is to make this district so good that they will second guess that decision and want to put their kids in SAISD. So I think that's our, our marketing. We don't actively try to recruit people from other places and other districts. We just, we're just trying to ramp up what we're doing here academically and provide safe, good facilities for kids and with high-quality teachers. I think if we do that, the rest will take care of itself.
Thank you. And that's a big part of the reason that I think our board hired you, actually, is because of exactly what you just said. And just to make it clear, I didn't mean recruit from other districts. I meant recruit our own kids back. But thank you very much, Dr. Brandon.
Additional comments? Thanks, Michael. I hope the report, we have work to do. I know that we saw some significant drops, especially in our younger grades when, when COVID hit, and now we're seeing a slight resurgence, but that that could play out in these curves as you move forward as these kids, some of these kids continue to return. So a little optimism there, too. Anyway, thank you. Okay, that's all. That concludes our reports. Next, we start with the finance reports, beginning on page seven. Page nine shows an unassigned fund balance of approximately $50 million at the end of October, with 12 million funds that are committed that are restricted. A lot of that, some construction money that we have finishing up. Page 12 is actually our October revenues and expenses, where revenues are at 21%, which is basically the state paying us forward for the next month now, as as December, January, February, we'll see most of the local funds come in to support our budget, and the state will back off for the remainder of the year until the end of the year to see the rest of their funds come in. Our expenditures were at 17.2%. Should be around 16% just as an average. There's a couple of things running ahead of schedule. Maintenance is running a little ahead of schedule, and then also there's some one, one-time yearly payments that are taking place that actually takes up most of our budget for the year. And so those are running slightly ahead, but the expenditures, again, at 17.2 versus, versus 16. So still real close, good, still on track, some good news for that. Any, any question on the revenues and expenditures report?
Quick question. When, I know it's not much, but when does the federal money drop? When do we get that? Is that usually at the end of the year?
It's, yeah, random, yeah, it's an ebb and flow, yeah.
For example, TEA would send a check for a lot of school districts first, first month as you enter a new school year, as far as paying those contracts and things like that that Mr. Dindel's talking about in your first salary. So it's, it's honestly kind of spread throughout the year as those things come in. So that's kind of the, why we try to hold three months, a minimum of three months in reserve. So as those numbers fluctuate, if we were to have a payroll or spend 12,000, 12 million in one month, right, we want to make sure that we have that three-month supply waiting, you know, for the next state check to come in, so.
We can move on from there to the check register for October, which is on page 13 through 36. And again, there's a check register for period 13, which is our closeout for the year, 2324. Those are in pages 37 through 49. Questions about any of those checks? If not, we can move to page 50, which is our October, September investment report. Investment earnings were about, let me get to that exact report here, somewhere around And then the page 51 is the October 24th report versus the October 23 report comparison from last year. Again, because the construction projects are, investment fund is slightly lower, so that's where we're sitting at right now. Let me see. Okay, if there's no questions on the investment report, we can move page to page 55 through 57, which is our PO report for October, for any, for any POs over $20,000. A lot of things going on there. A copy of contract for the year shows up. There was some scoreboard repair that we showed, also some construction money being paid out to catch up, a little software, product development, PO for milk, PO for orange chicken. There's a PO in there for the data center relocation as far as, and also for floor refinishing at Lakeview. So basically, those are the POs listed for over $20,000 for October. Any questions about any of those POs? Let me see if there's anything else. I think that is it for her, my report, Dr. Kingman, so thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dindel. All right, so moving forward with our agenda, we do have one action item that needs to be completed this evening, and that's to consider the election of candidates to serve on the Board of Directors for the Tom Green Appraisal District, and Dr. Brandon's going to give us a presentation on that.
Good evening again. So normally, we would take this action at the regular deci, regular November board meeting, but our, after the nominations go in, each governmental entity within the next two board meetings has to act on casting votes. Our board meeting was moved back in October, so October 28th was technically our first board meeting after the nominations were cast, this being our second tonight. We do have to take action. The, after speaking with the chief appraiser, we do have the ballot, and those ballots, you have a copy of that for the position, one-year terms, two, two individuals for one-year terms, and three individuals for the three-year terms. And then if you look at the resolutions, the resolution on that third page, administration would recommend casting the votes fairly evenly with our total of 1,548. It's not exact, but 309 votes each for Bob Reeves and Eric Wilson on the one-year term, and 310 votes each for Candy Pool, Louis Gomez, and Scott Tankersley on the three-year
Any questions regarding, this, obviously, these are the nominees that we discussed at our previous agenda, item approved, and so we just need to vote and get a motion.
Dr. Kingman, I'd move to adopt the attached resolution casting the district's 1,548 votes and enter the votes on the ballot for submission to the Tom Green County Appraisal District.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Mr. Gallegos. Any board questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. So thank you for that, Dr. Brandon. All right, so we're going to move forward. We're going to have, we're going to review our agenda for next week. Invocation pledge, we'll have several recognitions. We're going to, although today is Veterans Day, we're going to recognize veterans. We have a lot in the district. We're going to do that at our regular agenda meeting next week, just because that's, it's a bigger means, we're going to do it. And then we're going to do athletes, and then a couple academic things that Ms. Heber's going to help us with. Construction update, our academic report is going to be, what's the?
Title III for Eusthale Ballinville.
Perfect. And then, although there's not a lot of surprise on what we are doing with the money for the Prop A, considering we voted on that, we're going to make sure that we reiterate that, and Dr. Skellton's going to help us with that next week and explain to staff and how that's going to hit their checks, et cetera. And so then we have, look at, we have our bills, accounts, and financial statements. Be regular. We have our Title III program evaluation. That needs to be regular, or can that be consent?
Can you say what's your background?
Perfect. And is that going to be tied into our academic report as well? It's just kind of, would it be easier for Ms. Evolata to do it all in one setting, like do it all here at item H as a, okay. So we can scratch academic report, and we'll just let her do it in item H as a regular. Consider an update on annual T-test certified appraiser list. Dr. Gomez?
That's really easy. You all already approved the list in August. We hired an additional administrator after that time, so we're just presenting that additional administrator who's certified. Y'all had the name, it was highlighted on your list, so if you were good with that, it could go on consent.
I'm good with consent. All right, and then we have bid 20-014, and this is a vendor list addition. Do we need, typically, this is something one of the departments has requested. Any thing we need to hear on mathmatic? No? Okay, we're going to make that consent. Canvas of November 5th, assuming we get the Canvas of November 5th, assuming we get the results, we'll make that a regular. And then if it doesn't, looks like we're going to get, we'll keep that posted. Because even if, since it's posted, even if we get them on Monday, we could still do it that evening.
Right. So the, the county actually gives, well, the law gives us a window to the 19th to have it done. So the 18th is the day before. So we should have that information by then. If we don't, then the county is not timely, and that puts us in a little bit of a bind. But I think.
We will have them. But Jessica, if we don't have them Friday, can we post a lunch meeting on Tuesday? Just, because then we have to do it on Tuesday.
That's right.
So, and we'll figure out who's going to be here. But.
And a reminder, we only need two. This is one meeting, that you'll need two for a quorum, strangely, just to canvass the election. So if that happens, we can, we can do that.
But if, if y'all can make a calendar reminder that if we don't have them Friday at noon, or 11:00, let's go ahead and post a meeting for Tuesday at noon. It's easy to cancel a meeting, but we can't.
Yep.
I, I guess we could post under emergent, but let's just post it.
Yep, I agree.
All right. And then we'll have our announcements, will just be our December meetings. And that will be it. Does anyone have any questions? I don't have anything to go into executive yet. Any questions or comments? All right. Well, with that, we will have our meeting adjourned. Thank you all for being here.